I'm recording the meeting, and I know Mr. Johnson's also recording the meeting. For each agenda item that is requiring a vote, I'm going to ask the... Whoop, I'm getting a lot of feedback from someone, but I'm going to ask the council member making the motion, and also the one making the second motion, to identify themselves when you make the motion. And then each motion will be done as a roll call vote, and there'll be discussions after the motion, which we first go to the city council members, and then anyone who wishes to have a comment on the motion. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the March 16, 2020 minutes.
This is Dan Ross, so moved.
Dan Ross made the motion, is there a second?
Kevin Wilson.
Wilson, Mr. Wilson, seconded, okay.
John Wilson, second.
Okay. And now, now for the motion, I'll call each member. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Charbonneau? Give me a second, I'm finding the... Okay. Okay. On the motion, okay, Mr. Ross was aye, Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried. The next one is to approve the minutes of March 18, 2020, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Kevin Charbonneau.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, John Wilson.
Okay, and we'll do the same thing, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Kevin, Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The next item is the Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission vacancies, the council did receive, this is the Planning Commission, and also Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission voted to recommend Dennis Chenette and Chris Vachon to be appointed to membership on the Planning Commission.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Robin Smith, I have a point of information.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I use the public comment part. I have a question.
On public comment? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand when I was supposed to sign up, I apologize. And how could we?
I was, I was going to explain it again, give me, you know what, this is, this is new to us, so you have to be patient.
I know.
Just be patient, everyone, this is new, and public comment will be, public comment will be... Oh, I accidentally skipped public comment, my mistake. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself on the agenda. We will vote off on Planning Commission, it's my mistake, I have... So, thank you, Robert, for kind of reminding me.
No problem.
All right, so what I'm going to do now is, I'm going to go, I'm looking, I'm just scanning the list of attendees, and I don't know if I really need to go into the Q and A, I could just see if people want to make a comment, we could go in a, in a reasonable order, and be, give people time to ask their question, not question, but make comments. All I ask is, if you want to make a public comment, you identify yourself, and your, and basically also your phone number, so I could, because some of them I can't tell who is on, on the system. So with that, I guess I'm going to skip that, that the procedure I was going to use, because there's not very many people on, and so I'm going to open it up to public comment. And who would like to make a public comment, just if someone starts, the others can kind of hold.
So may I start, Mr. Mayor, it's Robin.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I wanted to know...
Go ahead, okay, I wanted to know if the council will discuss working conditions for
employees in, under New Business, or is that your meeting?
It is not an agenda item, and there is no plans on discussing the conditions.
Yep.
Okay, next? Yes?
This is Aunt Chirillo.
Yes.
My phone number's 334-7498.
Okay, go ahead.
And I had a sort of a question, and that is, I'm concerned about food security for people in Newport, and I'm interested in finding out whether or not our city manager is coordinating with other people, other organizations, so that no one needs to be insecure with respect to food, and in addition, that the Niles Fund in this kind of an emergency would be available, exceptions would be made for people maybe who have had it within the last five years twice, so that money would be available for food. That's my question and comment.
Okay.
Is there a response?
I said we would, I said that we would, we are, I'm taking notes, and that is, this is for public comment, it's not a Q and A session, it's public comment for non-agenda items, it is something that the city manager is, I'm part of the meeting, and will be able to answer it at another time. And as far as the Niles Fund, as far as the Niles Fund, there are strict requirements that I don't believe that we can change, but that's a question for Mr. Johnson, that the City Clerk Treasurer will have to research that, because as far as I know, I don't believe we can make changes to it, but that's something that he will have to look into.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone?
Hello, this is Judy Sush.
Hello? Yes, go ahead.
And I'm, I'm the manager of Newport Market, and I have two, one question or two, why wasn't the farmer's market on the agenda for this meeting? And I, we really do need to know that we, well, once this crisis is through, whether we will be on that site for this coming season. And my phone number, 274-8206, and thank you.
Okay, the reason why it wasn't on the agenda is because, from my understanding, the Recreation Director is due to have a meeting with, with members of your board about it, and of course with this whole stay-at-home order and the COVID-19, it's kind of delayed things, so it wasn't approved to put it on the agenda at this time.
Who was that? Oh, let me catch the name.
Judy Sush. Judy Sush.
Any other comments on the public comment? Now we'll, now we'll move on. The next item was the Planning Commission appointments, and we did receive a memo from Charlie Elliott about the Planning Commission and the vacancies, and the Planning Commission voted at their last meeting to recommend Dennis Chenette and Christopher Vachon to be appointed to the Planning Commission and Historic Preservation. And I would entertain a, a motion from the council to approve, approve the recommendation.
This is Kevin Charbonneau, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Charbonneau made the motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it, John Wilson.
Okay, seconded by John Wilson, discussion on the motion, from any council members?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
I do, John Wilson, it says that we're recommending Chenette Vachon, one appointment with a car in 2020, and the other in 2022, who's getting which one?
Good question, is Charlie Elliott on the phone?
I remember you're...
You better come up to get Charlie.
Okay.
Yep, he's coming.
Yep, he's coming. Good question, Mr. Wilson, I...
Well, yeah, because we reappoint him.
Right, right, no.
You might, you might want to see him.
Yeah. Either one of them could be, you know, they are, there's no real preference, I suggest maybe you would give Chris, that is a one year, and then Dennis the other one.
Okay, so it'd be Chris Vachon until, until 2021, and Dennis Chenette until 2022, is what you're recommending. Any other questions? Then I'm going to do the, I'm going to do the roll call on this, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item?
Mr. Mayor?
Go away.
Do we need to amend the motion to have the term limits on the motion, so everybody knows who's what?
Oh, well, it was, it would be Mr., I think I said Mr. Char, Mr. Vachon 2021, and Mr. Chenette 2022.
No, but that's not part of the motion.
Oh, okay.
No, I just think it needs to be on the record at this point.
Well, we can, let's, we voted on that, but let's, if Mr. Wilson wants to withdraw his second...
Wilson here, I'll withdraw the second.
And Mr. Charbonneau, you withdraw your original motion, and make the new motion.
Kevin Charbonneau here, I'll withdraw the original motion, and go forward with the new motion.
Which would be to appoint Miss, Dennis Chenette to the Planning Commission until, until 2022, and Christopher Vachon, a term expiring 2021.
That is correct.
Okay, so motion has been made, is there a second?
Mr. Wilson will second that.
Okay. And then we'll do the same thing again, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, Chris Roy, here with Elliott.
Yes, yes.
Are all vacancies filled now?
Yes.
And who was, who was the third vacancy, or actually I should ask, who was the first vacancy that you filled a couple, two or three weeks ago?
You mean the name of the person?
Yeah.
Who filled?
Sorry?
Oh, hold on, I have to...
Was it Bob Currier?
We filled Bob Currier's, we filled...
This is Dan Ross, it was a reappointment, I believe, of Dan Pickering.
Okay, that's it, you're right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor Wilson here, no, that's not the name of the person we picked after the last meeting.
No.
We picked one, and I, old somethings in his name.
Mario Oldaker.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's who we did it, so it wasn't that name, they just floated by.
Okay, you're right. All right, moving on, the next one is the 911 update, street renaming, and we have Charlie Elliott, Charlie wants to come up and give us an update and explain.
Okay, consistent with the material I sent you, this project began last summer with people complaining because of confusion with 911 responders, the complaints were specifically related to ambulances of at least two occasions of someone having a heart attack, and ambulance is being confused on getting there, causing some delays. And so to try to correct that, we had basically two streets that were occasionally, one was all the time blocked in the middle, and the other one, park time, had the same name, and the ambulances were going down the wrong way. So to correct that, we've done some work, and talking with the homeowners on those streets, and have come to an agreement by changing the name, one end of Paddock Lane to Lakeside Lane, and Camp Elizabeth Way, which had two access points off Bigelow Bluff Road, is now limited to one from Bigelow Bluff Road, and want to extend Hayes Road out to Bigelow Bluff Road on the other end, and then Camp Elizabeth Way would join Hayes Road that way out. This, from a 911 standpoint, if they dispatch now to Camp Elizabeth Way, there's only one entrance point off Bigelow Bluff, that eliminates the confusion of where they send the ambulance.
And the other one, Paddock Lane, Paddock Lane still exists on one end, but the other end of it is now going to be Lakeside Lane, and again, that eliminates the problem of ambulance people and others knowing where to go.
We've reached the point now where we've got a solution proposed, and I'd like to see it approved so we can implement it this spring. Most of the people who live on these roads are seasonal residents, and I'd like to get it changed and hopefully signage up before they all start returning for the summer. That's where we stand now.
Great, thank you. Questions from council members? Then we would need a motion to change the names of the roads, the two roads, as per the memo of April 6 from Charlie Elliott, the zoning administrator. So if council has no questions, then I would entertain a motion.
Dan Ross here, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ross, is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, second.
Seconded, any discussion on the motion? And hearing done, the roll call, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The next item is a USDA Community Facilities Grant Request, it's $150,000 for an intersection, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Welch to give a little background on the grant.
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Hello?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can, I just say the floor is all yours.
All right, thank you, and Thomas Burnier is here as well, I see his smiling face on the, on the camera there, so hi, Tom.
How you doing?
Members of the council, members of the council may recall that last year, the city submitted a application to the Northern Border Regional Commission for improvements at the intersection by Waterfront Plaza and Gardner Park Road. We'd initially applied for a half million dollars, which is the amount that's a maximum amount allowable for infrastructure projects, Northern Borders approved the grant of $250,000. So that meant that the town, or the city would be responsible for the balance of the project, which the total estimated cost was $613,500. USDA has what is called a Community Facilities Grant Program, Newport is an eligible recipient for that program, the match amount is 55% is what the grant can provide, the city would have to provide a 45% match, so what we're proposing is that in order to reduce the city's local share going toward this project, that we apply for the USDA Community Facilities Grant to make up a part of that local share, and then we'd, we could use the Northern Border money as match, and the balance of the city labor and equipment as match. So Tom has looked at this project for a while, it was identified in both an intersection study that was done by Stan Tech for the city in 2017, and then again in the waterfront, downtown waterfront master plan that was completed in 2019. So what's before you is a recommendation to proceed with an application to USDA in the amount of $150,000 to go toward the Waterfront Plaza, US Route 5, and Gardner Park Road intersection, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know that Tom certainly is much more knowledgeable about the project than I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson here.
Go ahead.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that, but reading Tom Burnier's letter of 18 March, so everything is looking good with Sand Tech, all these grants, but here's a sentence that Tom wrote, "I've contacted Central Mail, Maine, and Quebec Railway to pursue the option of moving Pomelo's right of way to allow us to align the entrances, no response back yet. Do we want to line up all this money and have the railroad tell us no? I mean, the railroad is not cooperative people in the world."
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I can, I can answer that question, we would like to realign the intersection.
Yeah.
If, if that's not possible with the railroad, I believe, my opinion is, we should still move forward with the project, that, that's the oldest traffic light, lighted intersection that we have in the city, and all the, all the rest of that project still can take place. Our ultimate goal would be to try to align the intersection, but if they're not willing to work with us, then we're, you know, obviously we, it'll remain the same as it is, but with a new traffic lighted intersection.
Okay, and that would limit our, the city's part of it, I agree with that, but I, because there's a lot of other work that went along with this, I just was wondering, the railroad...
Again, I don't think this should stop that project, and I have contacted the railroad, and I think because of everything that's happening lately, they've been slow to get back to me, they have responded, I just haven't got a response whether they'd work with us on it. As soon as I find out more information, I'll certainly let the council know.
And I know a person who would be, Mr. Wilson, I know Ernie Pomelo has stated that if we need help, he's more than willing to contact the railroad, because he got heavily involved with the railroad when they went to renew his lease, and the price is more than quadrupled, I think they tripled, and so...
I was on the council end, yeah.
Yeah, and so Ernie, Ernie said that he would be more than willing to work to help us with the railroad, because he has some good contacts, and so I, I'm not holding, I mean, I still think that they will probably work with us, but it's just going to be a time, have to be patient and give it some time.
Sounds good.
Other questions from anyone on the council?
Dan Ross here.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, is that money just for the reconstruction, or is part of that money for lighting too?
That, that extra money would be for the whole, the entire project, as you know, the project just doesn't encompass this, their traffic light, I'm hoping to do the lighting on the whole causeway, along with coordinating the other two traffic intersections.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Dan Ross here, I'll make a motion to approve the facilities grant request.
Motion made by Mr. Ross, is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, now I'll do the roll call, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, Chris Roy, Newport, um, do you ask people, the audience, they could identify themselves?
Whoop, whoever? Hold on a second.
Because they just...
Okay, go ahead, Chris, I guess we had some background.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry, could you ask people to identify themselves, when they, the folks in the audience, because I'm unable to watch from the webcam tonight, so I kind of have to guess who was speaking, I'm assuming that the second person who's up, Mr. Welch, was Mr. Burnier.
Yes, yes it was, you're, good point, Chris, sorry about that, I should have thought of that, this is all new.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is Laura Dalton, I recognize that on that...
I recognize that on that motion, it's required to have signatures on a resolution, and given the COVID-19 guidelines of staying away, I wonder if there could be a motion authorizing perhaps the mayor to sign the signatures? Because I don't know how else to have that resolution filled out.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Go ahead.
We did this similar thing in affidavits in the court. When the judge approved them over the phone, we signed it in his or her name and put our initials by it. I make a motion that we do a similar thing, because there are a couple of things here tonight that require a signature, that if approved, the mayor has authorized their signatures down on the form.
So a motion's been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Dan Ross, I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Now open up a discussion.
Yeah, this is Mr. Wilson. So on this resolution, you'll sign John A. Wilson, and then initial yours?
That's, yes, this is almost like a, not as formal as a power of attorney, but basically, right, I will sign the docs, sign your names, and put my name next to it.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Mike Welch, this is okay with the USDA?
Yeah, it'll be fine. The other way that we could do it is we could just have Jim do a certification that the city council approved on such and such a date, and he could just sign as the city clerk. So we could do it that way, too. Either way will work.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was okay with the USDA folks.
They're going to give us a little leeway with these days.
I know. I agree. Okay, we did have a motion and a second. Oh, I didn't have that on my check sheet. That's okay. Mr. Ross? Was I a yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. The next one is a USDA Community Facilities Grant in the amount of $30,000 for fire department radios. And I'll turn it back over to Mike Welch on this also.
Yep, so this is Mike Welch, Mr. Mayor, and Chief Harlomack did a nice job putting together a proposal for radio replacement. The memo that you have in your packet does a very good job kind of outlining the condition of the existing portable radios for the fire department. They really are in need of upgrading those units, and also getting some vehicle antenna systems that can help in terms of communications. This is, again, a USDA Community Facility Grant. The city has been pretty fortunate to receive a couple of these, both one for the fire department and at least one, if not two, for the police department for radios. The fire department was able to buy some turnout gear. So what we're proposing here is the total project cost is $30,000. The actual grant amount would be $16,500. The city's local match would be $13,500. The fire department has already authorized funds within its operation budget, and also has funds that have been committed previously for a grant match. So they have the local funds available. So we're recommending that the council proceed with authorization to submit this grant application to USDA in the amount of $16,500, and if the chief is there, I'm sure he could respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the application for $30,000 USDA facilities grant.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau. I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second to the motion?
This is Mr. Wilson, and I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Then, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
It's Roy Newpaddaly. How many radios is that going to buy? Are they for the trucks, or are they for the volunteers' personal vehicles?
The grant request is to purchase 14 to 24 new portable radios. These are portable.
Okay, yep.
Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the next one is EPA Targeted Brownfields Assessment Application, and I'll turn this over to Mike Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Welch again, and I can see Jessica's smiling face there. So Jessica has also been very much involved in this, Laura Dogan as well, along with Tom. So basically, what we're, as part of the Gardner Playground project, the city had done a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental study quite a while ago. One part of it was 2015, and another part in 2017. When we applied for the grants, the Community Development Block Grant and the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, we were required to go back and redo those studies. So thanks to a grant that the city of Newport, the town of St. Johnsbury, and NVDA applied for, we were able to use grant funds to hire StanTech Engineering to go in and perform another Phase 1, and also a Phase 2. The first time that the studies were done, there was not a lot of adverse conditions that were identified, and so that's what we kind of used when we applied for the grants here the first time around. As a result of the second Phase 2, there have been some findings, which is not probably a surprise to anybody in the Newport area, that there is some contaminants there as a result of previous activities that have been ongoing on that property for a long period of time. So the next phase that we need to get into after this is an extension of this Phase 2, and that's going to involve some additional groundwater testing and some additional soil sampling to get more information about how best to remediate the situation on the property to address any potential environmental issues. So what, we had a call with the EPA, with the Department of Environmental Conservation, NVDA, and the city officials, and EPA has identified another grant source which we can use to take this next step. So they already have a consultant on board that would do the work, but we would do additional water samples and additional soil samples. The memo that Jess prepared for you does a really good job kind of outlining what is going to be done. There's a map there that shows all of the areas that will have to be tested. And then once this is completed, we'll end up with hopefully recommendations in terms of determining exactly what needs to be done to remediate the site, make it as safe as possible for the playground and all the other activities that are taking place there. So what we're asking is permission to move forward with this targeted impact study, Brownfields' targeted assessment through the EPA, and I thank NVDA, Irene Nagel, and others there for helping us put this together, and Jess, and Tom, and Laura, everybody else has done a great job on this. So those guys can certainly respond to questions, and I'm happy to chime in if need be. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no questions, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the application.
No, I just got the...
Mr. Mayor, John Wilson, I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
This is Kevin Charbonneau, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion on the motion?
Robin Smith, I just have an informational question.
Go ahead.
How big is the grant? Is it $1,000?
It's $40,000 request? Yes, $40,000. Any other questions? Then we'll call the, I'll call the vote. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The next item was an executive session under 1 VSA 313A2 Real Estate. The only reason why we would need to go into the executive session would be if any council member had particular questions or concerns regarding the real estate. Does any council member have any, before we go to the regular agenda item?
This is Melissa, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
John Wilson, I have no problems.
Okay.
Kevin Charbonneau?
Yes, Kevin?
I'm all set. There are no questions.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on then. The next one is the conveyance of property for Proudey Beach Connector Project. I've got Jess on, Jess with us, I believe. Tracy Zhao, I always mess up your name, sorry, Tracy, from the Vermont Land Trust is also on the line if you have questions. Well, maybe Tracy and Jess could give a little overview. I'll go with Tracy first.
Hi, this is Tracy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yeah, so Vermont Land Trust is moving forward with the bike path connector project through Bluffside Farm, and the boardwalk and bridge to connect to Proudey Beach. And as a result, we are, as we are pulling together all the pieces for that project, we are working on both the permanent and temporary easements to enable us to have bridge land on the Proudey side, on the city land, and need both a permanent right-of-way to that spot, as well as a temporary construction easement for that perk. And so those are the documents that the city attorney drafted, and we provided the plans from our engineers.
Jess, did you have anything you need to add, or like to add?
No, I think it's, oh, I'm unmuted, yeah. No, I think, you know, it's a great project, and the fact that that's going to be used on the Bluffside Farm, you know, indefinitely for recreation is just an extension of our park, is a great addition, so I wouldn't see a reason why the city wouldn't support that.
Questions from city council members? If there are no questions from council members, I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second? Made by Mr. Charbonneau.
Don't even think about it. Look at the door again.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and second it. This is John Wilson.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms., yes?
Mr. Mayor, this is Laura Dogan. I just want to be really precise on this motion, because it's such an important and technical move, and our city attorney has recommended very specific language.
Oh, you're right.
I'm wondering if, again, we could make sure that the motion is very specific as the attorney recommended.
I could read the motion that he recommends.
I think that'd be great.
It was underneath, it was underneath the draft deed, and so that's why I forgot about it.
Thank you.
So the city attorney, the city attorney recommended the following motion. Motion to approve the posting and publication of the notice of sale of municipal real estate for the city's conveyance to the Vermont Land Trust of 1 of 1. Permanent easements for the construction, operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of a concrete bridge abutment, bridge and wooden boardwalk pathway on the city's Proudey Beach property, and 2. A temporary construction easement for the construction of a sidewalk along the southerly side of Bluff Road connecting a recreation path to be constructed on Vermont Land Trust Bluffside Farm property to the crosswalk westerly. Hold on, there is more. Yes, there is, on this page, double-sided. Of the intersection of Bluff Road and Proudey Drive, and to authorize Mayor Minette to execute the easement deed, and temporary construction easement deed conveying the, of course, said easements to the Vermont Land Trust Incorporated. If no petitions submitted, objecting to said conveyance. So basically, that's the motion, because it does, it does involve the real estate transaction.
Put the 802 in. Mr. Mayor?
Who's this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Melissa, sorry.
Okay.
That's actually the motion that's on the floor. It's the motion on the floor, I believe, is to convey into the property. So if you want that motion, we're going to see, the motion that's on the floor is going to have to be put on.
Right.
You go with the second amendment motion.
Mr. Wilson, will you withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. And Mr. Charbonneau?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. And then we need a motion to approve what I just read, which you all have copies of, and I have read into the record. So we need a motion for that.
I will make a motion to approve that.
So a motion is made. So a motion has been made. Is there a second? Made by Mrs. Charbonneau?
Mr. Wilson will second.
Okay. Any discussion on this, on the long motion that I read? One thing I want to read and make, make a note. Give me a second to find the paperwork again. Okay. This is something that I want everyone to know. Assuming the above motion is passed, no further action will be needed by the city council for the city to sign the easement deed once the 30-day, once the 30-day notice period passes. So this is basically being approved tonight and we, and we wait 30 days. And so I just wanted to have that out there.
It went black. It went black.
If there are no other questions, then I'll call that motion. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is authorization to sign warrants, 24 VSA Section 620, 1623A1. And I'm going to let Mr. Johnson address this.
Okay, Jim Johnson here. We passed the last one. So we could have somebody come in and sign these warrants on off weeks than having to call everybody and trying to get three people in to sign. And the last time this was passed was, I don't have the data. The last, oh.
March, May, May of 2000.
It must have been May of 2019. There you go, I gotta find my.
They said nothing about it, Tom, Sam.
Okay, so back then, Mr. Ross moved to, the council appoint the mayor to approve or sign warrant with this person, offering expenses, second on Mr. Manette. There was discussion. And the motion was, the second was withdrawn, and Mr. Ross amended the motion to say to move that we appoint the mayor and/or Mr. Manette to approve and sign warrants for this person offering expenses. So the mayor's already been approved, so we need to approve a second signer, my estimation. Somebody in the council wants to come in on off weeks and the mayor can't make it.
This is Kevin Charbonneau. I move that we change Mr. Manette to Mr. Ross's name and have the mayor or Dan Ross able to sign the warrant.
A motion was made by Mr. Charbonneau to have either the mayor and/or Mr. Ross sign the warrants on the off weeks. Is there a second?
This is John Wilson. I'll second it because Dan Ross is the council president.
So a motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion on the motion? What usually happens is if we have to get one in that, in that mail today, email today, I went in on the off week and signed it, and then Mr. Johnson usually will scan them and send them to the council members so that you can look at them for the, for the record also. I just want, pass that along. And if there are no other questions, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the gateway rates and fees, and I'm going to turn that over to Jessica Booth.
Hi, everybody. Jessica Booth here. So I submitted a memo for the council. Newport Natural lease is going to be expiring on the 31st of April. That was a five-year lease, that they were in charge of the booking and the caretaking of that facility. So in order to ensure that there's continuity for the community and people can continue to make reservations this summer, we're going to take that back over. So in order to do that, we just need an addendum to our rates and fee schedule because we had no rates included on that initial proposal in September for the gateway. So we put some numbers there together for you. And then there's a couple of contracts that are ongoing reservations that you might want to consider something different for. Does anyone have any questions about that memo or anything to do with the gateway?
Any questions from any council members?
This is Melissa. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Melissa, did you have a question?
Nope, I don't have any. I was just waiting. No.
Oh, I thought, I thought you, okay. Any questions from anyone? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Dan Ross here, so moved.
Is there a second?
John Wilson, all second.
Seconded. Discussion? Okay, then. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau? You might have lost Mr. Charbonneau? Let me see.
Aye.
Oh, you are there. Okay. I was beginning to. I didn't know. Okay. Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor? Just a moment, Claire.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I think we're on the same wavelength. Wanting to ask the council to make some sort of motion regarding the Rotary Club, that middle paragraph in your, in your memo that asks how you'd like to proceed. We understand the Rotary is unique because they've made such a substantial donation to the gateway when it was being built. And we've always tried to acknowledge that. They've been paying $30 a rental for, for a long time. We have no problem with that. We just wanted you to know that the actual costs are closer to 50. So we would like the council to please direct us on, on how to handle that. Through a motion would be best. And then we could generate a MOU based on the council's directive.
This is Kevin Charbonneau.
Yeah?
I have just draw up the MOU with that understanding of the special rate.
So you would like to see it capped at $30 or?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, that's a motion then, Mr. Charbonneau, right?
Yes.
Okay. A motion made by Mr. Charbonneau to come up with an MOU to, between the city of Newport and the Rotary Club, to have the rental be $30, $30 per rental, basically. And is there a second?
John Wilson will second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Then, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And one more. I'm sorry, Bea, but I just want to make sure we're thorough. The next one is to please let us know what your pleasure is for the Weight Watchers rate.
I think the memo says that currently they're paying $67 per reservation. And as I said, I don't think that they've seen an increase in quite a few years. So if we apply the rates that are listed on the top that we, that we're approving for essentially everyone else, then we would be then bumping them up to $75 per use instead of 67. And that, so that would be just a motion to apply the rates that are above to them instead of having a separate contract or MOU with them.
Have you spoken with them, Jess?
Um, the only conversation that I've had with them is to find out what it is that they're currently paying. I don't know that was a $7 increase or $8 increase would be a big difference.
Right.
Especially if we didn't maybe apply it until like July 1st. That might be a nice courtesy to give them a couple of months, you know, in notice.
Of course, nobody's paying now since we all have to stay home.
Right.
Questions from council members? Then I would, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Mm-hmm.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, John Wilson, all second.
Seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Dan Ross. Which value are we voting on?
It would be $75 per reservation. And then, because they're, Jess, you said they haven't had an increase in how many years?
Uh, it was, it was long before Newport Natural got their hands on the building. So it was at least five years, if not more, from there.
Yeah. Melissa, it says the five years, the memo.
Okay. All right. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Then I'll, I'll do a roll call again. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Chris Roy, Newport Daily. Why did the city decide to take it over? I understand that the lease is up with natural. Did the city decide not to renew the lease? And why did, if somebody can just refresh my memory, why did the city get into a lease at Newport Natural in the first place?
I will let either the city manager or the recreation director answer that.
Um, I think that Newport Natural had rented it through two leases and probably totaled, they totaled five years. And five years ago, we tried, we tried to lease it out to see if an entity who was in the business could do it better than the city, frankly. And it was a good run. We enjoyed working with Newport Natural. We were secretly hoping they would continue, but we understood that it wasn't a good fit for them at this particular time, particularly with COVID happening at this time. So they opted not to renew the lease. We put out some informal feelers just to other restaurateurs in the community to see whether or not they might be interested. And right now, as you can see, it's turned out to be a good decision for them not to have an interest in it right now. So naturally, the city's going to take it back over.
When, Mr. Mayor, when is the city going to return to, return to try to rent out the canteen again? Or have you any bids out?
I didn't quite understand the question. I'm sorry.
I think, I think he is referring to the snack bar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We've talked to some entities again, just putting feelers out. We haven't put it out to bid yet because we haven't gotten a real concrete feel for interest. We're hoping we'd be able to put up some pop-up snack bars on, on particular events. But again, with COVID, we're kind of pulling back on, on what we know and what we don't know at this particular point. So we're kind of holding our breath.
Right, sure. And for my own peace of mind, now, I can't see you, that's, that was the city manager who was speaking, is that right?
Yeah, sorry, I should have identified myself. That was Laura Dolgan speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we do need a motion for an executive session for personnel. I unfortunately, trying to find, I don't have the exact wording in front of me. I've got too many papers on my small desk. But we do need a motion for personnel before the next, before item 13. If someone wishes to make a motion.
Uh, this is Melissa. Are we looking at the, I have it in front of me, the one for confidential client attorney communications? Or, because they're not, my, or are we looking at VSA 330, 313A3, which is appointment, employment, or evaluation?
That's the one that, I'm sorry, Melissa, this is Laura Dolgan. That's the one that discusses personnel?
Um, it's the one that says the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer, official employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasoning for its decision at open meeting. Confidential attorney-client communication is for the purpose of providing professional legal services, which is that what we're actually doing? Is this communication with the attorney?
No, it's the first one, Melissa, that discusses, I don't have the book in front of me, but I think that's the first one.
Okay, I have it, I have it open in front of me. So, okay. I guess the only thing that has me a little bit hitched up here is provided that a public body, oh, we can just make it, not make a decision, is it provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain the reasons for a decision. But we're not, if we don't come to a conclusion, then we don't have to do that. We would just have to, if we were going to, we'd have to say what we were doing.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. So then I'll make the motion to move into executive session according to under VSA 313A3.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, all second.
Okay. Discussion? Then I'll, I'll call, I'll call the roll call. Dan Ross?
Aye.
Kevin Charbonneau?
Aye.
Melissa Patterson?
Aye.
John Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I'm putting, everyone is, who's not going to be in the executive session will now hear lovely music. So I'm putting everybody on hold, and you're going to hear music.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
And the ones being, and the ones being invited to an executive session, I will have to unclick and invite you in.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's Robin.
Yes.
I have an informational question.
Okay.
Uh, who will be joining the council in executive session?
It will be the city manager and probably the clerk treasurer and all the council members. Am I correct, Ms., Laura?
Yes, this is Laura Dolgan speaking. Yes, you are correct.
And why does the clerk treasurer join the council for such a meeting?
Um, I'll let the city manager answer.
I don't know that Jim, I don't know that the city.
He doesn't need to be in this one. No, I'm, you're right. I misspoke. He doesn't have to be in this one. So he will leave the room. He's in the room with the manager now, and he will leave the room.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. I get ahead of myself, Robin.
Okay, I just need to know. Thank you.
Okay, okay. We're now back in open session, and I would entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Mr. Charbonneau?
I make a motion that we postpone indefinitely the police chief's appointment.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Wilson will second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson, made by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion from council members? If there's no other discussion?
Yes.
Then I'll do the roll call. Mr. Ross?
Aye.
I have a question.
Uh, who?
This is Ann Shirello. I have a question.
Yes?
Why is it being postponed? Why is the decision being postponed?
Well, the council does not.
Indefinitely.
Well, we, the council does not discuss personnel status of any substantial public comment about the chief. We don't discuss personnel in public.
Uh, Robin Smith, I have a question.
Can, can we at least, so we have a motion second? Okay, Robin?
Sorry. I thought you have a second already.
We do. I just had to look at my notes. I've got a lot of notes here.
Yeah, I know. So may I ask my question now, Ms. Mayor?
Um, okay.
Yeah, it's, so, it's
Yeah, it's, uh, so, um, it's not about an individual, it's about a policy decision about not appoint, making an appointment at this time. So, is the decision to not appoint now because of the COVID pandemic? Or is it because, I mean, because you can't, um, seek candidates now? Or what's the logistical reason for not doing it now?
As I said before, um, we're not taking up that part of the business this evening, um, and we don't discuss personnel in the public or the press.
But, Mr. Mayor, may I press the question? Uh, you're talking about not making an appointment. I'm not asking whether you're reappointing or appointing. I'm asking why the decision to, the policy decision around postponing an appointment? Not about whether you're going to consider, uh, a current.
It's a, it's a personnel matter, and that's all I can say.
All right.
Any other questions? Let me, so we'll go back to the, to the tally, the roll call, Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, Chris Roy.
Go ahead.
A couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, the city manager sent out a notice to the press that Mrs., so his place on administrative leave, is he still on administrative leave? Is he still being, is he still receiving his paycheck?
Is Ms. Dogan there?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to answer that?
Yes, uh, yes, the chief is still on paid administrative leave.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Robin Smith with a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, what's the timeframe for the administrative leave?
I don't know right now. Oh, that was Laura, by the way.
Yes, thank you. Um, but what, uh, why don't you know right now?
I can't answer that, Robin.
Well, I mean, uh, my question is, uh, what is the, what are you waiting to find out would help you make a decision about the length of leave?
I have no comment to that, Robin.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, did he request to leave, or is this something that somebody in the city, um, decided to do?
This is Laura again, I can't comment on that.
Uh, one last.
We're gonna, we're gonna move, we have to move on.
Uh, this is relevant, uh, may I ask? It's about the leave. Um, it is on full pay under administrative leave, that's a policy question.
Robin, this is Laura, could you repeat that, please?
Yep, sorry. Um, is he on full pay as part of administrative leave? I, I don't know what the city's policy is when you put somebody on paid administrative leave.
Yes, paid administrative leave, he's on full pay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on, and I'll go through each council member. Mr. Ross, do you have any new business?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Ms. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This, well, I've had, uh, and I've got quite a few, uh, calls on this. With this COVID nineteen, uh, crap that's on us, will there be a delay in the, I think it's fifteen May property tax due? And will there be a waiver of the penalties if the, so are we, uh, allowing the public to have a delay on this? I've got a lot of calls, so this is kind of important.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, um, we've had, uh, some internal meetings talking about the pros and cons of that, and I think that Jim might want to speak up as well. Um, we've also spoken to the, our city attorney who does our, uh, delinquent tax sale, and, and one thing that we can do quick and now, uh, because there are so many unknowns, is we can delay the tax sale and, and work with people, um, who are on the tax sale list. That's something we can implement right away, and I'm, I'm actually really pleased about that. So far, I've had three people, uh, make new arrangements based on COVID nineteen, so I think that's a need that we can do here and now. Regarding moving the tax, uh, the property tax due date, that is an act of the legislature, and I understand that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is scheduled to take that up, if not this week, possibly next week. So we may have some, um, uh, circumstances that are beyond our immediate control because I believe the charter requires, uh, a legis, a vote of the legislature to be able to move that date, and we're still exploring that. Um, there could be a change, uh, in a week, and, uh, as, as we've been researching things, things are moving so quickly that we, we believe one thing, and the next day, something will change, uh, due to COVID nineteen. So I have to ask for just a little patience, but for the immediate, we can take immediate steps by, by delaying the tax sale to give people more time. So if people are, are delinquent, they should call me, and if they're on the tax sale, they should call me. So, um, that gives us a little leeway.
Uh, thank you, I brought it up because there's so many people asking, and I, you know, nobody knows the real answer, so.
Yeah, um, I believe that to be true, and part of it is because, um, if you go on the Vermont League of Cities and Towns website, you'll see, they have quite a number of documents, and, uh, it's a good resource. Uh, that's where we go, uh, for a lot of our, our information, and I would encourage the public to as well. And so, um, yeah, so I, I agree completely.
Thank you.
Yes, one more thing I did want to say. I've had, uh, as I mentioned, when I enter into a payment plan with our taxpayers, it's private and respectful, and we work with our taxpayers as individuals. And that's why I mentioned, um, we've had only three people make that request for me, and I'm not sure if, if, uh, Jim, do you know if, has anybody contacted you by chance to request a delay in the property taxes, I just, I didn't know? Yeah, so one person so far from the public.
I've had a couple contact me. The, the one thing with the property taxes, I can be saying it correctly, but the way they're so tied to the education fund, I believe that's part of the sticky wicket, and it takes the legislature to make the changes because it is so heavily tied to the education fund.
Okay, uh, I appreciate all this, but somehow, the public needs to know this.
Correct.
And I have one last thing on, uh, I guess, new business.
Okay.
Uh, and may geared towards the city manager, the COVID nineteen problem with, uh, the public works. Uh, I know what we're doing, but, man, you read stuff in the paper, and it, we, we don't look good in the public's eye.
I don't know when we have looked good in the public's eye.
I agree, but I've just got on, back on, and I'm seeing people, good old, uh, uh, computer world telling all of us we ought to leave, you know? Jeez, I'm cruel, I haven't even got on board yet.
Well, that's the nature of the work, unfortunately, and it's not just this subject, and it's usually the same people, um, who aren't involved and draw conclusions. And, uh, what I'm gonna say about that is exactly what the mayor had responded to the press, which is, um, I've worked diligently to make sure that the city is meeting the requirements of all applicable laws, collective bargaining agreements, and policies with respect to our public works employees who have raised concerns related to COVID nineteen. We certainly, we all know we can't discuss specific employee circumstances with the media, and, um, I, I've made sure that, uh, the city council members are aware of what's happening, and, uh, that's been really powerful and important. Uh, we're in a time of uncertainty. Um, COVID nineteen is a pandemic that is surprising everybody. As I mentioned before, the, excuse me, with the conversation about taxes, things are changing daily. And we're staying on, on our game, we're working with people, and, uh, we have an excellent team with our police, and our ambulance, and our public works, and we're grateful to all of our employees. We're on uncharted territory, every day is new. And it's not just for the city of Newport, it's for, uh, all of us, who I've, I've seen over again say we're in this together, we are truly in this together. I don't know when there's gonna be an end date, I don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. I do anticipate the governor will extend the stay-at-home, um, order, and I think he's planning to do that Wednesday, if, if I'm not mistaken. So every day is a new day, that's all I can say, we're doing the best we can.
And, and to you, Laura, from Mr. Wilson, keep up the good job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Mr. Wilson.
Any other new business?
No, I'm all done, no.
No, my, my only new business was just a kudos to all the, uh, doctors and medical people at the hospital, the people who work in the grocery stores, because they're all on the front line. And I, it was nice today to see the parade of emergency vehicles drive by the hospital showing their support for the medical staff. They, uh, there was a long procession today in front of the hospital, I happened to see it. And so that was nice to see, um, the support for the medical staff. And I also, as I said before, I want to give kudos to the people in, in all the grocery stores because I also consider them on the front lines as people who have to go in and do their grocery shopping. And it is an unknown territory, and, um, the, uh, numbers that they're looking at, they think the peaking is gonna take place in the next two to three weeks. I know, um, that's what their modeling is showing, but the, the governor did indicate, as Laura said, that he's gonna probably continue it to the end of April, the stay-at-home order. And so, um, it's, uh, we're all in it, as Laura says, we're all in it together, and make sure, if you're out, have to make sure you wear your mask and things like that. Um, so we'll move on. Uh, Mr. Johnson, did you have any new business?
Uh, you want to comment on the tax due dates?
Okay.
According to statute, uh, the tax due, taxes due and the dates are voted on by the town, the town leader. That's passed. And we just keep in mind that the interest on delinquent taxes cannot be waived. Okay? Now, Laura can waive the penalty unless it was voted by the town at a certain percentage, which I think it has been, a long time ago, eighty percent. And if that's the case, you can't do that. But interesting penalties can be abated, but I'm not sure this qualifies as one of the certain criteria for abatement, so I don't know what to go, I'd have to see what the legislation does, but. Go by the statute as it is right now, let's look.
Okay. Any new business, Laura?
No, thank you.
Okay. Old business? Mr. Ross, any old business?
No, old business.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Um, oh. Um. Let's see, Mr., I have no old business, Ms. Patterson, any old business?
No.
Mr., um, I guess that's everybody. I forget, I don't think I forgot anyone.
Mr. Wilson, does he have any old business?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Wilson. No.
No, I have no.
Okay, I was just looking at some of the notes I had. Um, okay, the next meeting is scheduled for April twentieth, two thousand twenty, six thirty PM, and right now, I suspect it will be a remote meeting again. Um, because.
Man say, man say, Mr. Mayor, I think you did a really good job tonight. This was uncharted territory again, you handled it, we had at least, at one time, we had twenty-eight people on board, and now we're down to twenty, but you practiced for hours and hours and hours leading up to this. I can't believe how smooth it went with, uh, really not having much of a dry run, and I just want to thank you for that, I want to acknowledge it and thank you for that.
Well, thank you. With technology, as we all know, things can happen, but I think it went well overall. Appreciate you.
Hi, also, Robin Smith here, I also want to thank you, um, and, uh, I, I would like to lobby for you to continue this, even if the government, uh, says to reopen there. Those of us who are providing a boon of protection for elderly parents, and we may not be free to go out and about for a long time, so, uh, we will, uh, hopefully, we can continue this.
All right, it's not, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for doing this, Mr.
Okay, um, I think what I, what we could do is, at the next, we're meeting, at the next meeting, not the next meeting, but the meeting afterwards, um, if we start to have them back in the council room, I can still easily set this up to allow people to dial in to the meeting, even if we're meeting in the physical council room. Because it's now that I've, now that it went fairly, you know, went well for this evening, we could always have a laptop set up and have it, have it at the meeting. So that's something we'll look into for the future.
Nice.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
This is Kevin Charbonneau, I'll make that motion.
Kevin Charbonneau, is there a second? We really don't.
Mr. John Wilson, I'll second it.
Okay. Um, all those in favor? I'm not even gonna take a roll call, because once you, once you motion, we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.